Exciting evening. When we have full house, we always get so happy to celebrate. And the first meeting of the month is always very exciting. And this, tonight is double special. We celebrate our teachers as well as our students. Good evening and welcome, and thank you for being here tonight. I will call this meeting to orders at 7 o'clock on May 1st, 2018. Please stand for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next will be our student school board representatives, and we are lucky to have four of them with us tonight, who will read our mission, vision, and core value statements.
We would like to welcome all of our guests to our school board meeting tonight. Here at Montgomery County Schools, our mission is that every student will graduate career and college-ready and become a productive, responsible citizen. Our vision is to inspire learning by providing a nurturing environment, positive relationships, high expectations, and continuous growth.
Here in Montgomery County Schools, our values for everyone include physical safety and emotional well-being, mutual trust and respect, open communication, accountability, engagement in lifelong learning, and cultural diversity. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you. The next item will be adopting our agenda. May I have a motion to adopt our agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Chabaka and Ms. Graham, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, we have an agenda. Next item will be Dr. Meyer's announcements. Dr. Meyer.
Alright, thank you. Several things are happening. Of course, we're at the end of the school year and a lot of events around our school division. One exciting event that I'd like to announce is this coming Friday at 1 o'clock, we're going to be doing something we've never done before. And just to give you sort of a comparison, you know, at our schools, we'll do what's called signing days for student athletes who have signed with a college to go play sports. We're going to do something very similar to those who are going into the workforce. You know, we have trained many students who are not going directly to college, but we've trained them to go into the workforce through several of our CTE programs. And we'll be doing a signing day here at our central office for over 40 students who are either going into engineering, cosmetology. We're going to recognize the students who have already signed to go into the military and recognize those students for what they're about to do. And so, we're really, really, really excited about that. So, anyone wants to come and support those students, we would love to have you. So, other things, we had our job fair a couple of weeks ago. We had over 170 applicants who wanted to work for and teach for Montgomery County. And so, we had many, many interviews, and they went really well. And we're hiring some great teachers for next school year. Had the opportunity this past week to visit Virginia Tech and Professor Dr. Wells. And he's in the Education Department there. And he has this thing called a farm bot. And it is a mechanized machine that involves CAD, engineering, robotics, and also agriculture. And his students are working with him with the farm bots at Virginia Tech. But, he is also building these same farm bots in our four middle schools, where our students can also experiment and work with him and his students. And our students are actually, his students are actually going to our middle schools and working with our students and doing different experiments with these farm bots. So, it's really just an amazing, amazing future that we're going to have with the Education Department of Virginia Tech with this. Had the opportunity this past weekend, if you didn't get a chance to go see Singing in the Rain, you missed a great show at Blacksburg High School, absolutely wonderful. It actually rained on stage. You know, I didn't ask how that happened, but it was pretty amazing. And it was real water, so. Let's see. Actually, yesterday, I actually got this in prior to coming to our meeting last night. I went and watched some of, it was the first ever official Blacksburg versus Battle of the Burg, Blacksburg versus Christiansburg girls and boys lacrosse games. And they played last night, and it was great to, it's a new sport for Montgomery County. And it was great to see those kids out there competing. And I wish I could have stayed longer, but you guys made me come to a meeting. And that's okay. But, a lot of fun, so that's it.
Thank you. The next agenda item will be honors, awards, and recognitions. Dr. Meyer.
Yes, at this time, let's see. First is a presentation by Shawsville Middle School. Mr. Andy Hippel will introduce students from Shawsville Middle School and share more about their school. Mr. Hippel.
Good evening, Dr. Meyer, members of the school board. It's a pleasure to be here this evening and share some of the talents of our students at Shawsville Middle School. Our focus this year has been community connections. And I want to talk about a program that we started this year. It was called Academic Nights. And with assistance from a grant by the MCEF, we focused on math, reading, and science. And our goal was to bring parents and students together into the school in the evening and really talk about curriculum and activities, and try to give opportunities for parents and students to talk to each other about subjects that they're learning about, and then some activities that they could take home with them and use at home to help hone their skills. So, our first one was a math night, and we focused, I put this game card on the screen because this is a game called Math 24. And in math class, every student is always trying to figure out what's the right answer. That's the question they ask the teacher. How do I know when to get the right answer? Well, in this particular activity, the right answer is always 24. The goal is to figure out, how would you get 24 with that combination of four numbers? And you can add them, you can subtract them, you could multiply, or you could divide. So, the idea is the students, instead of focusing on the answer, they're focusing on the process and going through the thinking process, how to get the answer. And there's always more than one way to get the answer. I put an example here for you. The number's eight, four, three, and one. Well, we could add eight and four together and get 12. Three minus one is two, and of course, two times 12 is 24. We've come to the right answer. But, we already knew what the right answer was. So, our goal that night was to teach families, kids, and parents alike to work together, think through some of these strategies on addition, subtraction, multiplication, and division. And of course, we all know that when you learn your math facts, whether it's addition, multiplication, or division, it makes simplifying calculations very, very easy. So, and we're going to talk in just a minute, because one of my students, Zach, was able to use some of those math facts in a competition. And we'll get to that in just a moment. Reading night, I put up Cat in the Hat. We celebrated Dr. Seuss's birthday. We had birthday cake, we had balloons, we had a party. And our goal was read, 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 because we know that reading increases our vocabulary, increases our knowledge. And so, our focus that night was strategies that parents can use at home with their children to read. We invited the elementary school to be part of our reading night. And we actually had several elementary students, as well as Ms. Boyle, I want to thank her for being here as the principal of the elementary school, to read to students and parents, because reading is that important. Oop, I skipped, well, I must have put a slide in. We also had science night, where we did science experiments. Seventh grade students taught their parents how to extract DNA from kiwi and from strawberries, and I think from spinach. Spinach, we had the most difficulty extracting the DNA. But, you know, what does it look like? How do you do it? And it was an experiment that they had done in science class before. My goal was have the students become the teachers, teach their parents, this is what we're learning about. This is the terminology we're using. This is the vocabulary that we're using to improve our skills. In eighth grade, those students used some supplies and built roller coasters out of marbles. And they were trying to figure out motion, and force, and energy, and velocity, so that they could calculate, can the marble go from one end of the roller coaster to the other, without any additional help? In sixth grade, we used the sand table, the augmented reality table that you saw demonstrated last summer, in looking at contours and water flow and, you know, what does that look like on a computer? What does that look like in real life? And how do they match up? So, it was an exciting night for science as well. So, junior beta is a middle school level of the beta or honor societies at the high school level. Zach was one of our students that went to the state convention. I'm going to let Zach talk in just a minute. But Zach actually earned the right, by placing third in his state competition, to go on to the national convention, which is in June. And he will represent Montgomery County and Shawsville Middle School at a mathematics competition. So, Zach, I'd like to introduce you, if you want to say a few words about your competition.
Hello, my name is Zach Craighead, and I attend Shawsville Middle School. This competition was an honor to go to. Although it didn't start off too great, by that I mean forgetting my calculator, everything went well in the long run. We only had one hour to take the test, and the faster you finish, the better off you'd be. They also judged you on how many questions you get correct. All of the questions were related to Algebra I and geometry. Taking into consideration all of these points, I got third place in this state-level competition. I would like to thank my sponsors, especially Ms. Grantham and Mr. Hippel, for making this opportunity possible. Thank you for your time, and have a great evening.
Thank you.
One of the other projects that we worked on this year, all of our students who are gifted have a gifted service plan. Our students in grades six and seven took on the challenge of identifying an event in history and creating a project, how would they explain that event? What's happened? Where did it go? What did it mean? And they put together a presentation. There are different categories of those competitions. And actually, I want to thank Mr. Rudisil, who's here as our Teacher of the Year, because he was one of the faculty sponsors that helped with the students in their presentations and helped them get to their state competition. So, we had 23 students that competed. We were one of four or five middle schools that went to Radford to compete in the regional competition. We had six students that qualified out of that 23 to compete at the national, or excuse me, at the state level in Richmond about a week and a half ago. And I brought along three students who, they actually qualified to go on to the state level, but because of their other activities, they're all involved in soccer, couldn't make that. They actually enabled three other students to go on and participate in that competition. So, I've asked these three ladies, Jamie, and Lily, and Logan, to talk about their presentation and show you their thought process of what they went through. Their topic was the Berlin Wall. So, ladies, come on over and...
We started by separating the wall into their parts, so the east side and the west side. We designed the wall, each sides of it, to represent what happened on the wall. The east side, we splattered with red paint to represent the blood and the death on that side. The west side is covered with strips of paper that we cut up and to represent the graffiti that was all over the wall. It was covered in the wall, because they wanted peace. They wanted the wall to be taken down. On each side, we have stories about each of their lives on both sides. We have facts about them, we have the timeline across it. And then, we had the conflict and compromise, because that was our main topic. The conflict was the wall was put up. That was like the main problem. And then, the compromise was Ronald Reagan made a speech, tried to get the wall taken down. And eventually, the wall was taken down due to the big push. Jamie, does this anything?
We started off, we were eventually going to do something completely different, but then, we decided to just make it just a normal trifold. And we, we, we were like, we have some information about like, why was the wall put up? Why was it taken down? What were the people's lives like on each side? We have a story about, there's a picture of that one guy getting killed trying to cross the wall. And there's a lot of really cool information that we didn't even know before we even started this project. Thank you.
I really liked the barbed wire presentation also. That was very smart.
I also remarked that I really, I first thought they made it themselves. But I thought, because most of the wall is barbed wire. And it's pretty dangerous to cross that barbed wire.
Yeah. Good job, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. The last part of this presentation is just a slide to show you some of the results of the climate survey that Dr. Meyer had asked all of the schools to participate in. These are just some of the facts from Shawsville, where 77% of students, they are proud to be a member of Shawsville Middle School. And I think that says a lot about the community, because there's a lot of pride in their schools. So, I didn't want to read all of those statistics, but just wanted to share them with you that we're looking at that and using that in our school improvement and school leadership teams, so that we can make a better experience for our students in Shawsville. So, thank you very much this evening.
Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight.
At this time, Dr. Graham, will you come up to the podium to assist us with our honors, awards, and recognitions?
This is an exciting night in that we have a lot of honors, awards, and recognitions. And we're going to go just a little bit out of order and let our Harding Avenue group come up first. Stephanie Cedar is the principal of Harding Avenue. And if she would come and present the presentation on the stock market game that her students participated in.
Good evening, everyone. I am very excited and pleased to recognize the highest-ranked elementary school team in the statewide stock market game competition. Tonight with me, you'll have Jinzie Anne, Oz Tross, and Graham Heisel, who worked alongside with their gifted resource teacher, Mrs. Helen Fotinos. This team turned their virtual $100,000 into $108,840,000. Over. Over the 10-week game period. The stock market game in an online educational program used to help teach them math, social studies, business, economics, and language skills, while focusing on the importance of long-term saving and investment. Students in grades four through 12 participated in teams and managed a simulated investment portfolio. We are very proud of this team, and what a tremendous accomplishment. And as Ms. Fotinos said, we had a correction with the comma. It was $108,840.87, which is still phenomenal during this time period. Congratulations to our team.
This time, Carl Polly, our Director of Secondary Education, would come up and introduce the seniors of the month program.
Thank you, Dr. Graham, Dr. Meyer, Madam Chair, members of the board. A very special highlight of our board meeting is the recognition of a senior of the month from each of our four high schools. As you know, photos and leadership profiles are displayed on the presentation board in the lobby. Our presentation format provides a snapshot of each senior and a quote from their administrator or teacher who nominated them for this recognition. It's my pleasure to present to you tonight, the, those who will present the seniors of the month, Mr. Mike Stanley, the Assistant Principal of Auburn High School, Mr. Shane Gwynn, the Assistant Principal of Christiansburg High School, and Mr. Matt McDaniel, the Assistant Principal of Eastern Montgomery High School. The Blacksburg High School Senior of the Month was unable to attend as often as the case because they're involved in activities. So, at this time, we'll start with Mr. Stanley.
Good evening. Thank you so much for allowing me to be here to talk to you about one of our seniors of the month from Auburn High School, Mr. Chance St. Clair. If he would come forward with his family at this time? As Mr. Polly said, you have his credentials in front of you. But let me talk a little bit about the narrative that was provided to us by Shannon McClellan, his teacher, as well as his coach. Chance St. Clair is a hard-working and conscientious student, who is also an outstanding leader in the classroom. Chance has worked diligently throughout his high school career and is now enjoying the benefits of being able to select from a variety of schools to continue his education upon graduation. Not only has Chance been an excellent student, he's been a great leader and a role model for his peers. As a senior class president, he worked to create a memorable homecoming experience for his classmates, and he will lead them as they graduate in a few weeks. He was also the captain of the competition cheer team and excelled at leading and motivating the team to a successful season and earning himself a first place at the all-region, as an all-region member. Please join me in congratulating Chance.
Dr. Graham, Dr. Meyer, members of the board, it is my pleasure to inform you that the Christiansburg High School Senior of the Month for May is Mr. Andrew Grant. At this time, Andrew, could you and your mom come up to the front, please? This is what some of Andrew's teachers had to say about him. Andrew is a spectacular student. He aims for superior efforts in his work, seeks out answers and questions concepts he is unfamiliar with. He is such a kind-hearted person who always takes the time to say hello. He brightens my day with his stories of autism activism, his volunteer work with Beta, and his involvement with his church. Andrew is the hardest worker I have had in 38 years of teaching. Andrew never backs down from a challenge. He selflessly gives his time to others. He is a true humanitarian. I just absolutely love Andrew's kindness, perseverance, uniqueness, and humor. Andrew will attend Virginia Tech in the fall to study biology. His long-term plan is to become an epidemiologist. Congratulations, Andrew.
Members of the board, Dr. Meyer, this evening, I would like to recognize our May Senior of the Month, Kaylee Grace Jones. Grace is the daughter of Paul and Dandy Jones. And I invite their family to join me up front. Grace is a member of the tennis, soccer, track, Scholastic Bowl, and MAC teams, and is in the marching band. She participates in many clubs, including Yoviso, Help Save the Next Girl, SGA, Spanish Club, FCA, Beta Environmental Science Club, DECA, Future Educators of America, Interact, and FBLA. In her spare time, she also performs for the Roanoke Youth Symphony Orchestra. Grace has had consecutive A honor roll at Eastern Montgomery High School and is a member of the National Society of Torch and Laurel, National Honor Society, and Congress of Future Medical Leaders of America. She's been named to all county and all district band, received the Star Character in Academic Award, and the top 5% of EMHS Award by the Blacksburg Rotary Club. Grace volunteers at the Meadowbrook Public Library with the EMHS Blood Drive at Cambria Pentecostal Holiness Church, the Christiansburg Soup Kitchen, and Habitat for Humanity. She plans to attend Radford University to obtain a degree in labor and delivery nursing. EMHS Band Director Stanley Bragg had this to say about our Senior of the Month. Grace Jones has always exhibited strong leadership characteristics amongst her peers, and she always strives to do it in a warm and caring, personable manner. She maintains a high level of performance and challenges herself, as well as others around her, to excel in academic studies, music, sports, and citizenship. Her wonderful sense of humor, positive attitude, and amazing work ethic are only some of the character traits that are appreciated by her friends, peers, and teachers. Her academic work is exceptional, even amongst other outstanding students, and she truly leaves an impact on the lives of her fellow classmates. Grace embodies the spirit of what it means to be a Mustang and will no doubt rise to all of the challenges that she faces in life. Congratulations.
At this time, if Rick Weaver, our Administrator of Career and Technical Education Programs, will come forward, he will recognize CTE awards for the year.
Good evening. I'm honored to be here for what is an annual event of recognizing CTE Student Organization State Winners. We do this every year, just the names are different and the contests are sometimes different. Before the summer's out, you will see some of these students back, because they now will be competing at the national level, and we should have some national winners for you to recognize. So, tonight, we have a few students I'd like to introduce you to. We'll start with Auburn High School's Future Business Leaders of America, their teacher, Mrs. Gilmer, and students Alec Adams, Alex Adams, and Brian Wilmer. If you'll come forward, please. Alex and Brian, along with their partner Chase Phillips, won first place in entrepreneurship at this year's state contest. Adam Bishop also won first place in the help desk category and was unable to be here tonight. Ms. Gilmer, can you briefly explain to the board what the entrepreneurship contest is? Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you all for supporting CTE education. We were able to take 15 students to the state competition this year. And I am taking, for the first time in Auburn history, six students to the nationals. And so, two of them are here. Brian and Alex are on the entrepreneurship team. And they were given a scenario and 10 minutes to discuss the scenario and go before a panel of judges and try to explain how they would fix a situation in a business, in the business world. So, basically, they had to come up with strategies to deal with that. And obviously, they did really well. Adam Bishop was the first-place winner for the help desk. And he's a Geek Squad member, and he's working at Best Buy today. So, he wasn't able to help to come today. But that, certainly, that experience helped him answer his questions well.
Adam was actually one of our first IT interns.
Yes, he's also, he's been our intern for two years, so.
Thank you. Next, from Blacksburg High School, we're going to recognize some students from the Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America, the FCC LA. If you'll come forward, please, Mrs. Radsay and your students, Kalina Hanosky, Carly Simmers, and Logan Gillespie. These three young ladies won first place in the Focus on Children event. Their colleagues, Lucy Kong and Dory Gilmer, who could not be here tonight, also took a first at the same event in the advocacy contest. Ms. Radsay, can you explain this contest these young ladies won?
Thank you for having us tonight and acknowledging the hard work that all of these students have put in, in their project. The Focus on Children STAR event, and STAR event stands for Students Taking Action with Recognition, was a project where students had to choose and identify a weakness in the community in terms of young children and families, and design a project to help advocate for that. And so, these ladies chose childhood obesity and worked really hard to fundraise for funds and planned a superheroes event where they held it at the after-school program at Rainbow Riders and also at the after-school program at Gilbert Lincoln Elementary. and also at the after-school program at Gilbert Linkus Elementary School. So it was a free event for the children that were already at those programs, but also gave the staff there a little bit of a break. They provided healthy, nutritious, and fun snacks, linked to superheroes, to get the kids excited about what they were eating, and then also played a lot of fun, high-energy games to get the kids moving. And they were obviously recognized as first-place winners for all their hard work, so thank you so much.
Thank you, ladies. Next, we have another student from Blacksburg High School with a really unusual contest that was not a CTE Student Organization contest. It's something rather unique, and I will ask the teacher to describe it, so I won't steal her thunder. Kaia Nguyen Painter, student, and her teacher, Ms. Kelly Showalter, from the Graphic Arts Program at Blacksburg High School. Ms. Showalter, if you could please describe this contest and how Kaia got this recognition.
Thank you for having us. So we were presented, or the state, and went out to the whole state to be a part of Action Against Distraction, which is focused on creating and designing a plate, focusing on distractions, not necessarily texting and driving. And Kaia's won. Her license plate says Eyes on the Road, which is sort of broadly based, so we are not to be eating, or doing our makeup, or brushing our teeth, or texting, or any such activities while we're driving. And she, her license plate won, and it will be available July 1st at any DMV. So we'll have to look for that on the list.
Right after Kaia's design was announced as the winning design, all of the interstate digital billboards had her slogan on it, Eyes on the Road, and I was really proud of her. We have a couple of other CTSO first places I'd like to announce, but these folks could not be here. The DECA State Leadership Conference Representatives, Ms. Radford and her students Elena Bronze, Charles C. Key, and Howard Shi, were all first-place winners at this year's DECA State Competition. Likewise, with Skills USA, the students are unable to be here tonight. They came home with the USA Chapter, Gold Chapter of Distinction Award, and the State Skills USA Region Four Vice Presidency. That's Ashton Wheeler of Blacksburg High School is the State Four Region Vice President. But their club sponsor and teacher is here, and we need to recognize her, Ms. Price. Ms. Joyce Price, cosmetology teacher, and longtime Skills sponsor. This year was named the Region Two National Advisor of the Year, and will be recognized for this distinction at her national conference this June. Congratulations, Ms. Price. Thank you, and as you and I both know, the student awards and the successes are a direct reflection of the students, of the teachers' dedication and hard work. Thanks to all.
At this time, if Mr. Polly would come forward, he will introduce the Winter State Championships.
Thank you, and hello again. Actually, I'll be passing this off to the athletic directors from each of the schools, so if I could ask the Auburn High School Athletic Director, Mr. Dominey, to come forward, and who's here for Blacksburg?
Mr. Lewis, right?
Mr. Lewis is here. Mr. Lyle was not able to be here. So Assistant Principal Mr. Lewis will be here for Blacksburg, and Shane Gwynn is here for Christiansburg. So they will just come up and then introduce you to their coaches and athletes in order. Thank you.
I gotta tell you, it felt really bad tonight. I don't have a single joke in what I'm going to be saying to you, and I worked on it all day. There's absolutely nothing in here that's humorous, and I apologize. However, this was described by the Wall Street Journal's School Board Presentation Review article as being pithy and densely packed with information. So here goes. Auburn competes in indoor track and field in a combined 1A-2A championship. And while this was the first season that Auburn did not win a team-state championship in any sport since the winter of 2015 and 16, our combined finishes in boys and girls indoor track and field was the best we've had yet. We also had several individual state champions, and I'd like to introduce them to you tonight, although I have a hunch you'll remember seeing these people before. So come on up front. First, I have for you Caitlin Dominey. She won the 2A 1,000-meter championship by pulling away halfway through the race and cruising to a 4.5-second victory. She is also the reigning 1A 800-meter champion in outdoor track and field. Our second state champion is Brandon Justice, who won the 2A 500-meter state championship with a blazing fast run, outpacing everyone in the field. This was an especially sweet victory for him, since it took place at Roanoke College, where he will be attending college and running track this coming year. And our third one is Nolan Harris. He's surprised no one in winning the 3,200-meter state championship. He was the reigning 3,200-meter and 1,600-meter champion for 2A indoor track going into the meet. He is also the current 1A outdoor track 3,200-meter champion. He'll be attending school and running at the University of Virginia this fall. Thank you very much.
Members of the board, Dr. Meyer, thank you very much for having me tonight. I am pleased to recognize two very special athletes and two very special people. If you guys will come on up. First, representing our swim and dive team, Coach Riley is the coach, and we have Lindsey Miller with us. Not only did she win the championship as a diver, but she also set the state record at the meet. Also, I'd like to recognize Colton Beck with Coach Brandon Baer. He represents our indoor track team. He also set a state record at the meet in the 55-meter sprint. Thank you, and congratulations to both of you.
I'm not Shane Gwynn, I'm Tim Cromer. Athletic director. Dr. Graham, Chairman and Chair, Dr. Meyer, members of the board, standing before you today as a proud Christiansburg High School Athletic Director, but also a proud Papa. I've got the two Winter State Champions with me from Christiansburg High School, Cassidy and Caitlin Cromer, and their track coach, Tommy Trotter. Cassidy was the 3A state champion in the pole vault. She was ranked number one coming into the day, and she held off the competition and won the pole vault with a vault of nine feet, six inches. So we're proud of her. She is a multi-sport athlete at Christiansburg High School. She's also a cheerleader, while maintaining a 4.17 GPA. In the fall, she'll be attending Virginia Tech and majoring in biochemistry. Caitlin, her sister, they won both championships in the same day. It was pretty cool for us as a family. She was the 3A state indoor champion in the triple jump. She came into the day ranked second. She led for the entire meet until right before her last jump, and an opponent got ahead of her by a quarter of an inch. And Caitlin won the championship on the last jump of the day with a jump of 36 feet, 3 inches. So we're very proud of her mental toughness on that one. She runs indoor and outdoor track, will maintain a 4.0 GPA, and she'll be attending Liberty University in the fall and be a member of the Flames Track and Field Team. On a side note, we believe that it's been 43 years since twin siblings have won VHSL state championships in the same day. So Cassidy and Caitlin Cromer.
We have two other special groups to recognize tonight. Mrs. Karan will come forward and recognize the student school board members, and then we will close with the Teacher of the Year recognitions.
It's my pleasure to recognize our wonderful four school board member student representatives. I would like to recognize them, and please come forward. Josette Gray Lee from Christiansburg High School, Chad Hughes from Auburn High School, Maria Pizano Franca from Eastern Montgomery High School, and Steven Yang is from Blacksburg High School. Those students represented their schools as student board member representative of the school board, and this was the first year we had that, and I'm so proud. We had this opportunity when we attended NSPA conferences. We met some student board representatives, and we wondered why not we can have. So thank you for Dr. Meyer and the board, the leadership to, you know, put that in place, and they did a great job representing their schools, sharing what kind of school activities have been happening in the schools. And we joked, and there were nice jokes too. And it was, we traveled to VSBA. They attended the school board representative session there. I'm pretty sure they learned a lot. So congratulations, and thanks for being with us so dear.
Our final presentation tonight is the Teacher of the Year program, and it is a highlight of our year. As the selected teachers are representatives of the excellent work and dedication of teachers throughout Montgomery County, we are pleased to have two partners that are with us here tonight to help present this. Ben Jackson, if you will come forward. Ben is with Horace Mann, and he has provided a crystal apple for every one of the Teachers of the Year. And if Sharon Scott and Mike Burnup will come forward. Sharon is representing the Chamber of Commerce, and Mike is with the New River Valley Office Supply. The Chamber of Commerce provided the reception that we had tonight, as well as they have a gift bag for each one of the Teachers of the Year. And at the beginning of next year, they will recognize our Montgomery County Teacher of the Year with a $1,200 gift certificate. So with this, I'll go ahead and I'll call each teacher, and then we will name the Teacher of the Year at the very end. Our first representative is Auburn Elementary Katie McDaniel, who teaches 5th grade. From Bellevue Elementary Courtney Hall, who teaches kindergarten. From Christiansburg Primary Heather Shelton, who teaches 2nd grade. From Christiansburg Elementary Stacy Swineheart, who teaches Special Education. From Eastern Montgomery Elementary Kristen Stowe, who also teaches 2nd grade. From Falling Branch Elementary Maggie Maloney, who teaches art. The Gilbert Linkus Elementary teacher could not be here tonight. That was Kelly Trotter. From Harding Avenue Elementary Juliette Russell, who teaches librarian. Kipps Elementary Matthew Fintris, 5th grade. Margaret Beeks Elementary Megan Ridgely teaches kindergarten. From Prices Fork Elementary Courtney Hood teaches Special Education. Moving to our secondary schools, Auburn Middle Cammy Reese is an instructional coach. From Auburn High School Jennifer Ray teaches Social Studies. From Blacksburg Middle School Katie Conway, who's a counselor. Blacksburg High School could not be with us tonight. That's Jeanette De Persio, who is a math teacher. From Christiansburg Middle School Sarah Hicks is a business teacher. From Shawsville Middle School Randy Rudisil, 6th grade. Eastern Montgomery Eric Tatum teaches math. Our Montgomery Central teacher is Jeremy Jackson. He could not be here tonight. And last, but certainly not least, is our Montgomery County Public Schools Teacher of the Year, Emily Redding, who teaches math. At this time, we will take a 10-minute break to allow all the board members to congratulate the honors and rewards receivers tonight.
Will be public address. At this time and at each of our regularly scheduled meetings, the school board sets aside 30 minutes for citizens to address the board regarding the education issues in Montgomery County. Each speaker is allowed a three minutes and screen throughout the room and the laptop will indicate when speaker has 30 seconds remaining and when three minutes has passed. I do not have anyone to sign up. Anybody in the room would like to address the board? Like to state your name and address?
All right, Matthew Fintris, 395 Summer Ridge Road.
Even though I might know that by heart, but no.
You're welcome to visit. Just down the road. Do they all need to state their addresses?
Yes, please.
Kelly Pleasant.
Glenn Chilcote.
We just wanted to thank you all as a board for supporting teachers and education. And then we wanted to start, my mom was big into thank yous, so I apologize if I owe you all one and I haven't given it to you, but we wanted to start as association to thank you all and to recognize one of you. All of you have supported the education association, but we kind of talked about ourselves and we're going to start a new Friend of Education Award this year. And we would like to recognize Connie Froggett for the Montgomery County Education Foundation for helping us make noise at the Board of Supervisors meetings and just being awesome. So if we could all, oh, they all left. Can we all give her a hand? There's no money involved.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to address the board at this time? Seeing no one, the public address is closed. Next item is our approval of our consent items. Anything that you would like to question or take out? I think if we only have the field trips, if nothing questionable, we consider the consent items approved as they are. Next item will be our payment of bills. May I have a motion to pay our bills?
So moved.
Mr. Chabaka and Ms. Froggett. Any discussion regarding the bills? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We pay our bills. Next item is our business part of the meeting and first will be the board member reports. Board members, whoever wants to jump to share NSBA?
Sure. Yep, I'll start. So obviously this month was the, I did attend NSBA in San Antonio and just wanted to share some of the highlights from some of the sessions with you guys. So I went to a session given by the Houston Independent School District about helping low-income kids get into top-tier colleges. This is kind of a fascinating initiative that they had there. They pointed out that the college graduation gap between low and high-income students is really a gap in universities that are not selective. That when you get to the most selective universities in the country, there's almost no gap in the graduation rate between low and high-income students. So you know, the thrust of that is that it's basically a myth that low-income students will not succeed at selective universities. And so they went through a presentation on how their district encouraged low-income kids to apply to these schools and then help them get the money to be able to attend. I thought it was fascinating. It does take some effort and some volunteer effort, but it's something that, it was, you know, one of the better sessions that I attended. Another one that I think was really powerful for me that I attended was called Beyond the Bathroom: Ensuring LGBTQ Students and Staff Thrive. And this was given by a superintendent who was gay and talked about some of the challenges and pointed out how a hostile school climate negatively affects LGBT students and staff and talked about some relatively small things that school systems can do to really be more welcoming across the board. I attended a session on community engagement in how it relates to teacher PD. And this was kind of interesting to me since obviously we're making some changes in our PD. This was the Provo, Utah City Schools and they basically worked with Brigham Young University and they said that what they were trying to do was not to do PD to the teachers, but to give them options and let the teachers have a say in their PD. I thought it was kind of an interesting, an interesting talk. I can get into more details if, you know, in the future if you guys are interested. And then lastly, I attended a session called Boot Up CS, Computer Science for Elementary, given by, one of the speakers was the Board Docs founder Ari, I can't remember his last name, I didn't write it down, but he, they gave a very effective talk and it's one that we've heard at VSBA before about how important it is to be doing CS training in schools at the elementary level. And they're, one of their big focuses was that it's not something that you want to do, it's not as helpful if you do it once a semester. It's really something that you have to do about once a week, like PE or music or another elective. And they went through a bunch of different strategies and stories for implementation. A couple of things that I took away from, they said that when kids do coding at the elementary level, it really helps with engagement and performance in other classes. So it's not just something that's, even if these kids don't go on to become computer scientists necessarily or use it in their career, that it's still something that's really beneficial. And it's interesting, I see that Mr. Eric Tatum, Teacher of the Year from Eastmont is still here. And we were talking in the, at the reception and actually, and I wasn't telling him about any of this stuff, but he said, he was talking about that he's teaching ACS class at his high school now and was saying, and commented to me that, you know, he finds that by teaching this class and this subject that his kids are becoming more engaged. And I said, I've heard that research before. So a couple other things, the, when you start teaching CS at that level in the schools, one of the things that they said that you're going to see is you're going to see an increase in demand for your district. So I think this can, really can be a selling point. They even went as far as to say that they saw kids from homeschooling come back to the public schools when they enact, for some of these districts that have enacted this. They ran surveys that showed that 90% of parents want their students to be taught the code, asked the same questions to administrators and it was only 10%. So I thought that was kind of interesting. And they went through some, you know, it's not something that necessarily needs a whole lot of investment. And we went through, they went through some examples like turning a keyboarding class into coding, which I know we're doing some of that kind of a thing where we're turning some of our keyboarding classes into, you know, media classes or other computer classes. So, and then finally, they also kind of came with a warning that when you do this at the elementary level and those elementary school kids get through all that and they get up to middle school and high school, you have to start thinking about what you're going to do to bolster the CS programs at the secondary level because at that point, what you're now, what we're now teaching in high school and middle school is going to be elementary for those elementary kids when they get there. So I will also add that I did, I spoke with Dr. Graham when I came back about this and we had a really good talk and I'm happy to see that, because there's a couple of different ways we can go with this. There's a lot of, there's a lot of free resources out there, but there's also companies that you can pay to set up the curriculum for you. So there's a couple of different ways you can go on it. And I, it's kind of interesting that some of the conclusions anyway, that we've, that Dr. Graham has come to, going through the process with the committee, lines up with some of what my findings and our findings was at NSBA. So I think we're on the right track, but I guess my, my message or, you know, to my fellow board members is really to challenge us to think about, you know, what more we can do even beyond just what the state requirements are in this area. So that's enough for me.
It's a good recap of many sessions. Any other board members would like to jump in?
But was the fact that, and I love the movie Hidden Figures and he used that as an example about how women were so strong in learning computer skills and it's really fallen off, girls are not involved near as much in the computer aspect as boys are. And, you know, what, what can we do to try to influence that thought process into young ladies as much as we are young men? So that I thought was a neat takeaway from that too. And of course, I always, you know, pick CTE and things like that, but one of the Career and Technical Education courses that I had, it was a big convention center and a couple of them that I had gone to, I mean, I checked my phone, I walked five miles a day and trying to get from course to course. So, and if they were full, they wouldn't let you in. So I had to kind of rethink my map of sessions a couple times. So I can't recite exactly who and where and all that kind of stuff because I ended up in some that I went, okay, I'll do that. But the Career and Technical Education one that I did take, it was, talked about a lot of the things that we're doing already and I bragged and bragged on ours and, but it was talking about find, find what your community needs, learn the history of what your community is. And, you know, it was kind of cool because they showed a lot of the history that San Antonio had, you know, the first that they had, the things that came from the different types of, whether it be the River Walk, whether it be certain programs, certain buildings. And they even shared that, you know, JFK's last speech, I guess, about walking on the moon or going to the moon happened in San Antonio the day before he was assassinated. So it was just really, really neat and it got my attention on how much history. And they were, they were just talking about how that kind of leads to Career and Technical Education for your area. And one of the, I actually spoke with some people that, and they were kind of saying that they didn't feel like a lot of students were career-ready, that they didn't know the simple things. And in talking with some people since then, you know, little things like spreadsheets, little things like, I mean, I couldn't, and this is just, and I'm pretty good on iPad, but I couldn't get my Google paper thing to open to edit it. I mean, I tried and tried and tried. And she was saying the same thing. You know, a lot of students are coming out and they're not knowing how to do these different Excel and spreadsheets, some of the simpler things like me. But it just was a lot of, a lot of neat stuff like that. You know, one of the other things that I had went to was, I can't read my writing here, I wrote it down so quick. The opioid, the one that I went to, they closed the door, it was so full. And it was more of a session on what takes place after the situation occurs of addiction, where I was probably looking and one of my questions to the presenter, they had a doctor and, you know, a teacher and someone else and a police officer. And they were showing all the different programs that they're trying to put in. And they really gave a lot of great points. It's proven that ibuprofen is more effective for pain than opioids are. It's more of a mental thing and so many doctors just easily give those and they're really trying to make such a difference because it's become such a problem. And one of the other sessions in Denver that I had taken, shared the fact that there's been no funding put toward the opioid addiction program or problem in America, not like alcohol abuse and tobacco abuse and things like that and other type drugs. That opioid has been kind of pushed to the side. And now people are realizing it because it's such a huge problem. And I think they said, I mean, it was crazy. I want to say one out of five people you know have an opioid problem. I mean, it was a really high number. But, you know, like I said, I kind of questioned the fact, well, I get that there's all these programs for once it happens, but what are we doing to stop it from happening? You know, what about the education toward not choosing opioids to take and not to let that have a problem? And she said, you know, you're preaching to the choir, so to speak, that's, but you got to get the horse before the cart, you know. So anyway, it was a really neat session. It just probably didn't tell what I was looking for, but she shared with what kinds of things were happening at high school parties called the Lazarus something or another where they take something that makes them almost to the death point and then brings them back. And I mean, I didn't understand, but it was crazy. But, you know, so that was one of the other sessions that I had gone to. And, you know, we had some fun. We went to an event one evening at one of the get-togethers on the River Walk and that was a lot of fun. It was put on by ABM. We really enjoyed that and we all became superheroes. You know, I can't not show our picture that we did. I was going to get it up there. So there was some fun involved too. And last year, some of us that were in Denver saw a group that was from Texas and they, I can't remember the initials of the high school, but they won this year, the Texas State Championship, and they were a mariachi band. And it was phenomenal. And they didn't have them performing at the general sessions, but they had them out in the hall. And I was late for one of my sessions just listening to them because they were amazing. I mean, simply amazing and I have that on recording too. So, and another thing that I thought was really neat was, I was looking in, anytime we go to these conferences, we get these booklets and everybody at the conference uses these or unless they download it on their phone. And, and I'm not saying I'm for it, I'm against it, I'm just making a comment. And so I'm going to tread carefully when I say this, but I found it really interesting that one of the pages in the, the book that we tend to go by so much, Four Reasons Today Students Need Bible Knowledge. And I was really, really just impressed and they weren't saying that, you know, you believe or you don't believe, but I was amazed. It says, I can't even halfway see, but 98 out of, no, let's see. It was just, 99, 98% of high school English teachers said that students who don't know the Bible are disadvantaged when reading English literature. And it was just talking about how many quotes in American, our English literature come from, you know, Bible teachings and just knowing different peoples, people in the Bible and things like that. I just thought that was really neat for those who sometimes, you know, make a lot of accusations to public schools. And I thought it was really neat, the name of the conference was Be Extraordinary. And that was a real continuous saying throughout it all. And a really, they really were getting signatures for public education and trying to get everybody on board for supporting public education. And I was just definitely really pleased that everything that I saw was positive and I enjoyed it. It was great.
Ms. Froggett, would you like to share?
First, I want to apologize for being late, but I was representing us this evening at the VSBA Regional Spring Forum in Bradford. And it was a wonderful event and our speaker this year was Dr. Pat Huber from, the president of New River Community College and talking about her experiences, particularly with the school systems that she works with, us being one of them. And she had a lot of nice things to say about, you know, the collaboration we have going on there and the great things that we're doing. And so that was a wonderful, wonderful event. I did fortunately get back in time to see the teachers. And so that was a wonderful, wonderful event. I did fortunately get back in time to see the teachers. I still got to see that. As far as NSBA, I wasn't sure I'd be back here in time, but I did want to talk, just, I pulled up my schedule because I'm a phone person like Jamie said.
Well, that was one of the things I found it hard. And if you're like me, when you go to the sessions, they're talking so fast, you can't hardly take notes. And I was trying to take pictures of the script. So then when you want to go back and gather your, your, it's a little difficult.
I'll pick the ones that, that actually put the slides on.
Exactly. I mean, yeah, you know, that was one of the things that I struggle with is, is, you know, I'm trying to listen and tie it. Crazy.
So the first one, one of the first ones I went to was on educational foundations. Imagine that. This particular foundation and, and just to, they've been around, they've been around as long as ours has since 1987, but they were active from the start unlike ours, which really didn't reactivate until 2011. And it was interesting to parallel where we are now with where they were, you know, five, six years into their history. But this particular foundation serves a school district about twice the size of ours. And last year they raised 1.9 million dollars for their school district. See, God, I'm not as great as you think. But they are exceptional. They've been doing this a long time. But they did put forth an interesting sort of standard that you can judge your foundation by. In our case, this would be a goal, which is $50 per student per year that we should be trying to raise. So for this division, that's a half a million dollars. And that would certainly make a huge impact if we could take this foundation to that level. And that was why I went was to see, you know, we're an all volunteer board. We do not have a paid executive director and we're considered a small nonprofit. You know, at what point do you make the decision to grow it to the next level where you have at least a little bit of part-time paid staff, particularly in the fundraising area, and you start trying to get into the, that, those kinds of dollars for your school division? So that's something that, actually the foundation board will be having a retreat in June and we'll talk about some of the ways we could do, perhaps get us to that level. I went to two different sessions on, and keeping in mind, these are divisions, most places when they're trying to raise money for schools, they do it through bond referendums. We don't do that here. And as, but because of that, you essentially have something on the ballot. So it's just like having a candidate on the ballot. You can run a campaign to try to get people to support raising taxes, passing bond referendums, things like that. And their divisions out there, well, the one I went to raised, there's 43 cents. Now, that said, you're going, wow. This was in a state where the state had basically said, we're just not supporting it anymore. We're going to push it all to you. So we're not going to charge you taxes. You know, the state's not going to charge you those kind of taxes, but it's going to be up to you to, to fund. So they were able to pass a 43 cent tax increase by running a campaign. And they actually went so far as to even create their own PAC to support this campaign. So it was just interesting to see sort of the, really on steroids version of how you get your local body to fund your schools. The other one that I sent, that I went to, and they, they actually, what they did, they got Peter Coyote to do a video for them. It was pretty impressive. If you don't know who that is, that's the guy who narrates like all Ken Burns documentaries. But he did a really, and I did buy a copy of it, interesting video about, you know, public schools, what we're facing. And I think it's a good resource because it's, it's the same story with all of us, what they showed in that video. It's excellent, excellent video that they did. I also, the other thing I went to was a, a school law update. I always like to go to those. And of course, as always, the two biggest issues right now facing school boards, the one that they tend to get litigated the most for is usually in special education cases and that is still the case. You know, special education waters are always difficult to navigate anyway. But you know, there's a lot of legal issues that come into that. And then of course, the other one was transgender issues and where we stand in terms of any cases. And of course, there is one case that could make its way to the Supreme Court this year possibly that might settle that issue once and for all. So I think that was most of it. Then the other announcement I did want to make for the educational foundation, when I was here last time, I was able to announce that we had received the 100 plus women award that night. And this was during our Give Big campaign. And the next day was Give Big. And with our matching donations plus what we brought in from 100 plus, we were actually able to raise in one day just over $75,000 for our educational foundation. So start writing those grants, guys. I'll see you in the fall.
Before you start, can I, are we using a program called Gaggle or Go Guardian in our, okay? Have you ever heard of those? Okay. Just because one of the sessions that I went to and it was here and I went, oh, I forgot to ask that question. I thought that was really neat because it, they could follow, especially with the cyberbullying. And they were, you know, that was just an automatic flash that came to a teacher or administrator that, hey, this student made a comment on, online about wanting to hurt themselves or hurt someone else, or you know, even in a colorful language. And it was automatically noted to the administrator and then they, you know, could take it to that parent. But I thought that was really, really neat. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. There's one called Gaggle and one is Go Guardian. I would say it's the Go Guardian. But it can, it's on every, every device that they have. And you know, so the kids learn that really they have to, be real aware of how they talk, what they say. And like I said, anything goes to the administrator and they can, and they alert parents immediately of what's happening. So I thought that was really cool. Sorry, sorry, sorry.
That's all right. Ms. Froggett, anything to share? Ms. Barton, anything to share this time?
Yeah, I wasn't able to go to the San Antonio. I know. I know, I hated, I missed it. But while you guys were gone, I did, I was able to get some things accomplished. I was able to tour Bellevue and go to their Passion Fair project. I think you were there as well. I think I mentioned last time we had a meeting that I attended the NJHS induction ceremony at CMS. But what I didn't get to say is I didn't get to publicly announce that my daughter got inducted that night. So I'm very proud of her for that. It was an honor to be with Ms. Froggett and Ms. Graham and Ms., was it just us three? It was just us three, wasn't it? For the Teacher of the Year presentation. That was, that was pretty special. That was the first time I was able to do that with being on the board. So I really enjoyed that. And I did go to the Eastern Montgomery High School mock crash last Thursday, which I have to say was very impressive. Emergency services, Shawsville Rescue Squad and Shawsville Fire Department along with Montgomery County Sheriff's Office was there. And the unique thing about this was, they normally do it gearing towards alcohol-related events. However, this year it was more geared toward distracted driving. YOVOSO was, was also in with that. And this year's crash was about a gentleman that was texting and actually hit a police officer and killed him. So that was, that was pretty, yes, to the crowd and the, and the kids there. And the great thing about it was the timing because it was the day before prom that weekend. So the Christiansburg High School and Eastmont High School prom. So very impressive, not only with the, with the crash and everyone involved, but also with the message, getting that across as well. But they were also trying to get the kids involved in signing up to volunteer for the communities, like the rescue squad and the fire department, and was trying to get them involved in that. So I thought that was, exactly. So I thought that was pretty, pretty impressive. It was, it was a great event.
Ms. Frank, if would you like to?
Okay, so two weeks ago, I attended a VSB hot topics conference, conference in Chesterfield, Virginia. And this was on equity, which is one of the, on the top of the list for the Virginia State Board of Education. But the sad thing about it is, it's one of the lowest attendance hot topics that they have in VSB. So whenever this topic comes up around challenging schools and equity, folks don't show up. And that's not good because this is the message that folks need to hear. Talking about equity in the schools around race, diversity, poverty, everything. You know, folks who live, who have high achieving schools, high achieving students, there's still challenges that go on. That was one of the first things that I realized when I came on this board, that our gifted students, they have issues too. They have challenges that need to be looked at and addressed, just like all of our other students. So folks need to get some of the stereotyping around these conversations out of their head because it's about all students. But the biggest point is around students of color and students of poverty. It was very interesting. Pretty much some of the stuff I already know and have been talking about for the last many, 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 many years. One of the big components is cultural competency throughout the district. We're talking about everyone who touches a child, from the bus driver to the principal, you know, the custodians. Everybody needs to have awareness of how we're treating our students, what their needs are, so that all of our students feel welcomed, nurtured and supported. There was lots of talk around equity officers. And these are folks who make sure that equity policies, because those are things that need to be in place to make sure everyone understands, this is what we do. You know, we have policies to support that. And then there needs to be accountability to make sure that the policies are being adhered to. Let's see. One of the biggest surprises for me was in the afternoon, there was a panel of superintendents, board members, talking about the success that they have had around their equity programs. You know, this is what they do. They have a real commitment to it. And one of those was Roanoke City. And actually Norfolk, you know, said, we stole our stuff from Roanoke, right? And these folks on this panel talking about how they communicate with each other, how they talk about the best practices that they use to ensure these things, the checklist that they have to make sure that this is what is happening in the buildings. I did ask the gentleman from, who was the vice chair of the Roanoke City School Board to send me their information. And I'm going to have to reconnect with him because I haven't received that yet. But it was eye-opening that someone right down the road is so far advanced throughout the state is the work they do around equity. Their numbers were impressive. Which leads me to, I had the opportunity to sit down with a group of African-American students. This was over their lunch period. So from 10:30 to 1 o'clock, because everything ran a little long, sat down with African-American students in this county, talking about their experience in their building. I think I sent an email out to folks and it was shocking. It was disheartening. It was sad. I felt helpless at some points, as many of the students are feeling too. A lot of them were saying, they didn't even report things because they didn't think anything was going to be done about it. So you know, that was really sad. That if there were things that were being done, then the students would report things, right? So not saying there is absolutely nothing being done, but we need to have a way of holding folks more accountable. Holding what we say as a board, you know, true to what it is. When you sit there and you hear students saying the same things that you went through when you were in school, your kids went through, and it's the same things, you know. At some point, this stops. You know, this is generational that affects our students, affects their children, affects our society. Yeah, yeah, our schools are a reflection of our society, but in our schools, there are things that we can do that society can't do because it's within our control, within our four walls. You know, there are already things that, well, in the school system, we can do this, but you couldn't do that in the outside, you know. So Dr. Myers and I have talked about things that we can put in place to better serve all of our students and to help our faculty and staff understand, we're serious about making sure all students are taken care of. Have a lot of good people out there who are doing their best, but we have some folks who just don't understand sometimes how to handle situations. We need to address that, you know. We need to support folks to understand that this is how we deal with this. There's also a big conversation around the N-word and how and why that is used and why it needs to stop. You know, so I did do a challenge with the students to see if we can help everybody understand that. They had lots of suggestions, so those were passed on to our staff and the superintendent as to things that they felt might, might help them too. And as Dr. Meyer talked about before, our community group hosted the second annual dinner for our candidates who came to our job fair. And it was a lot of fun. Different from last year because this year we had families, I mean, babies and preteens and husbands and wives. And it was, it was just really a lot of fun. It still is amazing to me how much folks talk about how much they appreciate it and how different this is from other places. Like, they don't do this in Georgia, you know. So it was, it's well worth the effort to make sure that we're bringing in folks and helping them understand, Montgomery County is where you need to be because we need you here too. So that's all I have.
It was well worth your banana pudding too. Very good.
Thank you, Ms. Franklin. Actually, I will tie my NSBA report to that final sentence because I actually bragged about our community dinner when I attended a diversity and inclusion session, a competitive edge for recruiting and retaining teachers session at NSBA. And you know, they were, they were discussing how, how to keep and what can you do. So I don't usually raise my hand and participate, but I did raise my hand and participate and bragged about how we approach them and, you know, hold the job fairs in, in, in our schools or in, in our school board office. And then wonderful committee group, you know, invites all those to dinner and they took notes and wrote it down. And they said, that's a great idea. Why we didn't think about it. So goodos to the committee group that Ms. Franklin leads. So that was one, one of the, part of the sessions. And it was also interesting, when you look at the number one reasons, once that they are teacher in the system and hired and working, they don't leave the profession because of the money, according to statistics. They leave the profession because of the, not, not, non-existing corporation or collaboration. That's the reason they leave. But for, you know, having a new teachers coming in, number one reason when they listed is, is of course, the, the money. You know, so it's really important for us to have our beginning salaries be competitive, you know, according to those statistics. And the, the big emphasis on the mentoring program in schools. And they also apparently went to colleges and build relationship with their careers, you know, centers to be able to attract new teachers to the systems. Another session was on special education and how import, well, that was, that was a school system that actually just starting to include, you know, special ed students to their, the body of their student. And I, you know, I told them, we've been doing this quite some time in our county. And, but the, the difference, what they are and we are now getting into it is the co-teaching. I think they were very proud that they've been co-teaching from the beginning and they just started a couple of years ago. And they, they claim their achieving gap for their And they, they claim their, uh, achievement gap for their special ed kids, uh, closed due to the co-teaching. So that was pretty, pretty impressive, and I know we are on the right track with co-teaching in our division. And the other one I, uh, attended was the, uh, unlawful discriminatory discipline that comes, uh, with the apply the discipline equitably, revise the student code of conduct if needed, train all staff so they can apply the discipline equally. And, and then the other one was why education equity matters, so providing access to effective education. And one, you know, the, the lady that gave that session was the lady that my first NSBA, I attended a session, what new school board members should do or not do. And I really liked her presentation back then. This is, I guess, my first NSBA in Boston, and, uh, she was like so research-based and very easily followed, very organized. Uh, so actually, I saw her name, and I attended because of her name, then because of the title of the session, then I realized the session was really good too. So, and she did a great thing, and one thing I picked up there, it's the equity chart. You know, she suggested to put, you know, in your division, put all your schools on the chart, and put all your, let's say, ESL students and teachers that teaching with master's degree, teachers that teaching with just a, just a PhD, or your, um, special ed kids, and put, put a chart and list all your s- schools and see who teaches where, you know, where your, uh, free reduced lunch kids are more, and, you know, just to see the equity across your school division. And I think it was a good chart. And I shared all those, I took notes on Google Doc, and I'll be happy to share with everybody, but I did share with Dr. Meyer and Dr. Graham, so the ideas in there, all the links in there, you know, webpage to look at it, so. And if any board member liked to see my notes, I can add your email too, so that's, that's the way I do, because I took so many notes, and we can go forever here if I read all of them. Um, and this, and I think the last two, one, one was full steam ahead, and that was, uh, a little simplified, but again, it was interesting, because it was teaching, the collaborating between the social sciences and the technology classes, and, and they give a, uh, example of if the social studies studying Egypt and, uh, art class building, you know, pyramids and, um, and the, and the three D, three D technology class makes them three D, so how you can do all, you know, different, uh, subject matters and work on one, one topic and how you can, uh, do that. So that was, I know some of our schools and some of our classes, we already do that kind of collaboration between the subjects. And the last one was improving school community relations and engaging your legislators. Uh, one big thing that we don't have, and, you know, hope we can have it at one point, that their, their emphasis is, uh, alumni relations. You know, you hear that in colleges, how the graduates get back to their colleges, whether it's a financial donation or volunteering, and how we can follow our high schoolers, you know, when they leave the high school, what they're doing, how they can, you know, give back to their school system, they graduated, how we can track them down. And that was very strong in the school that I attended. And then the other thing is giving our information, how good we are doing as a school district to the real estate agents. So when people are trying to come and, uh, find houses, you know, brag about the schools, and every community has great school system, you know, that kind of getting the name out. So that was very powerful also. And locally, I attended, uh, Bellevue Passion Projects. I attended Harding Avenue Fine Arts and Steam Night, and I attended Auburn, a middle school passion project, and Gilbert Lingle's Elementary School Passion Project. These passion projects are becoming my passion, because it has been so, so interesting and so great across the division. I don't think anything repeated so far. Everybody is doing so many different things in so many different ways. Sometimes it's just simple trifle, sometimes it's an amazing slideshow, and the topics from sewing to cheetos and space to, uh, Legos and NFL too. I mean, it's just like amazing of the kids' interests, so it has been. And then also, I, uh, attended Blacksburg High School Band Benefit Bash, and that was very, very nicely done. So that will wrap up, I think, all our board member reports, and thanks for being here.
Wait, wait, wait a second. Ms. Karan, why don't you let everyone know about your impact on a young lady's passion project?
Oh, my goodness, what did I do?
You got it in your box?
Oh, yes, of course, of course. Oh, uh, the first passion project, actually, I think first fair that I attended, I saw this young lady, I should remember her name, that's, that's bad, but, uh, she was working on putting a cookbook together, and her inter- interest was Mediterranean cuisine, and one of the countries she was studying and fixing food for, it was Turkey. And of course, I said, "Okay, you know, that you're, I'm challenging you now," and she actually decided to make a baklava. Well, that's the hardest thing you ever, ever probably attempt to make, and I probably did twice in my life, and I probably won't do more. But she and her mother study, and of course, there were other Mediterranean, uh, countries, uh, influenced her, her, her thing, and her biggest thing is writing a cookbook. So I, I encouraged her, I said, you know, "That will be wonderful," and she had probably, uh, five to ten recipes she tried in their kitchen with her mother. And, and, and ending up, she did put together a wonderful cookbook, and with a very nice, uh, cards, she, uh, dedicated, well, not dedicated, but she shared with me that I will have my own copy, so I can follow her recipes, and it's really, really cute. Thanks for, thanks for reminding, yeah. So it's in my cookbook collection. Unfortunately, I am a, not, I collect the cookbooks, but hardly follow them. But maybe I will follow that baklava, because it's so hard to do. Um, thanks, thank you. Thanks for being with us. I know the, uh, you didn't have to, but I'm glad you were here. Anything you would like to share from your school, or in general, you wanna make a comment?
Uh, yeah, um, so, first of all, at Auburn, you can really tell that, uh, graduation's right around the corner. It's, it's really showing now. Um, and, uh, right now, tennis, baseball, and softball are all underway, and all teams are winning their fair share of games and matches. I apologize if I sound a little muffled, I have a bit of a cold, um, but, uh, and, uh, one thing in particular, though, um, that, uh, I really liked that happened within the past month that I noticed, was, um, um, some students from the Virginia Tech, um, Language and Culture, uh, Institute, um, did a, like, um, like a kind of a working together with, um, one of our, uh, history classes, um, actually one Ms. Ray's history classes, uh, she was the, uh, Teacher of the Year from Auburn, um, but, and what they did was, those students from Tech, they, they are in that program to, um, more fluently learn English and, um, and like study, uh, American culture and, uh, what, kinda what we do, um, uh, before they go into Tech to pursue whatever, um, education they're going to pursue. And, uh, actually, a retired English teacher from Auburn, who now works as a tutor at that institute, set it up, a Ms. Sumner set that up, and, uh, and it was just, it was really cool to see that. It was, uh, students from China, from Kuwait, um, places like that, and they were in the school with us, um, learning things about us, and at the same time, they were learning things about the, the, the students were learning things about them, and I thought it was a really good way to, uh, share the culture and, uh, experience the cultural diversity, um, that we have, and I thought it was really good, and I hope they, uh, keep doing that or do it again. Uh, that was really neat.
I think the pa- paper, paper covered it all right. I remember reading.
Uh, there were a couple different ones that covered it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
That was really cool. And, uh, I just, I'd like to say it has been an honor to serve here this past year, and I appreciate the opportunity to do so.
Yeah, wonderful to have you as well, and good luck. I think we'll see you doing great things, and we'll watch what you're gonna end up doing. Board members, any other questions and comments to chat, or?
Just thank you for all you've done.
Any, anytime if you'd like to leave, you're free, free, free to leave, but you can stay as long as you want. Next item will be Dr. Meyer's show, the budget update.
Yes, um, at the last meeting, uh, the, the board indicated, uh, for Budget Option B to be presented again. This budget adds three additional teachers for increased enrollment, um, and moves technology purchase to our carryover request for the board supervisors. Uh, this is the carryover number that the board supervisors previously shown, um, support of. We're still waiting for the final state budget. Um, you know, we will ask you to approve a budget, we have to at our next meeting, um, even if the state budget has not finalized, which it probably will not be at this point the way it looks. Uh, but what would happen is we would, you all would approve the budget at the next meeting, and then we will, uh, approve an amended budget once the state numbers are actually final. You know, I feel confident that we are, uh, putting forth a budget with a, um, with the worst-case scenario from the state. So, um, you know, I, I, our thoughts is, or that, you know, if anything does happen with the state budget, it would be increased, an increased amount of money. Um, and so I, I, I guess, you know, the only difference in the original budget and this were the adding of the three teachers, two at Blacksburg Middle, one at Christiansburg Middle, which are really needed due to the increased enrollment. Um, and at this point, just ask for any further input on this budget.
Any input, any questions? I heard that, you know, the state may not have their budget till June or so, so hopefully that won't be the case, but that's the rumor on the, rumor on the street, I think.
Gina Patterson announced at the forum tonight that she's been called to the governor's office tomorrow, which usually means they're gonna be talking education funding, so there might be some news coming out of that from his office.
Okay, that's.
So, but of course, at this point, we still need a legislative budget.
Right.
Any others comments or questions on the budget what we have? It's in the wait, waiting stage.
Well, I mean, this is the budget that I will bring back to you in two weeks to approve, um, to move forward with, and we would go ahead and issue contracts based on this, um, following that meeting.
Yep.
Okay?
Seems like if no other questions, we'll go to the next.
Be great, um, last, Mr. Krantz, come on up. Um, you know, last night, you heard from Mr. Krantz at the joint session about PPA, Construction Financing Options. Um, I've asked Mr. Krantz to give you further detail, uh, so that you can discuss the information in, in more detail with him tonight. You know, I think we got a good start last night, just sort of given an, an overview of what we would be exploring, but really wanna get into a few more details with you tonight, and just to get the, uh, wish of the board to, you know, do we keep, keep moving or not, uh, with this, um, with this? So I've asked, um, uh, Mr. Krantz to put together a timeline, um, a possible timeline of a PPA project if we were to continue to move forward. And so, Ms. Krantz?
Yes, sir. Good evening. Um, with this thing started last night, there's already been four organizations or four companies that are involved in PPA projects around the state, um, that have proposed, and there's a few others that I expect to hear from tomorrow or in the next two days. So it looks like there'll be anywhere between six to eight different entities that'll be looking at, um, the PPA and trying to work something out, uh, with our school system, which is good, because competition always brings out the ones that wanna do the most on a transactional basis. Um, what'll happen between now and about August first will be everybody's working together on the feasibility of the project. And we obviously, from a school system, would be heavily involved in those conversations with them, um, giving everybody the best information possible, but ultimately, they have to make the decision on what kind of entity and what kind of structure that they wanna put forth. Would expect that around September first, and I'm being very conservative, that the first unsolicited proposal would be submitted. At that point in time, um, the administration would review, in accordance with the, the school board policy, that proposal, determine if it meets certain criterias that are set up inside the policy, and then make a recommendation to the board, uh, to move forward with the advertisement. At that point in time, it's a forty-five day period, so all parties would be, have the opportunity to submit any proposals that they have. Those proposals will go through review, um, it'll be a very detailed review. Um, I would propose that that's done in a committee type of a format. With that, then there comes a recommendation from the administration to the board on whether to proceed. If it is, you begin which parties, you identify which parties you wanna proceed with. Remember, I said this last night, if, say, five organizations submit, you can go to the next stage with all five. Nothing precludes you as a board from just picking one at this point in time, okay? You, they then go and work on the development of a submittal for what's called the detail phase. The detail phase would probably be submitted around March first. It's a fairly, you know, strenuous process there. Now you're starting from the company side as well as the district, finalizing your numbers, finalizing your scope, really getting into all the minutia that's involved with this type of a project. Once they submit, the administration does a very detailed analysis of the detail phases, which, um, as we talked about last night, and what's under your board policy. If during either the conceptual phase or the detailed phase, the administration and/or the board believes that a third party needs to be brought on board to assist in that analysis and maybe rendering an opinion, then the, the parties that submit the proposals would pay those costs. That's not something that the administration would pay. If they submit, say fifty thousand dollars, and that's generally kind of a beginning sum that most do, then if there's any monies left over and they're not the winning bidder, it would go back to that company, whatever's left over. Goal would be, and again, I'm being conservative, uh, with a recommendation around May first, then you begin the contract negotiations, and depending on how well your, your work was between conceptual to detail, your contract negotiations can move quickly. I kinda took a worst-case scenario and went sixty days, and you'd be at a July first execution date. At that point in time, the project is in the design phase and construction. So that kinda gives you a rough timeline of, of a PPA. Um, it is a long process, it's not something that's just gonna happen overnight, um, because, you know, one, you've got the, you gotta wait till you get something. So that starts then the clock on the forty-five days, and then that really will start the clock as far as the calendar and moving things along. And the better the proposal, the quicker the process will work. But all of the firms that I've talked to, I believe will be, if they all submit, will be submitting very good proposals, so they all have extensive experience doing this in this state. So then we get to the question, do you wish for the administration to keep exploring? And again, it's just exploring. At any time in that process, up to the time you, you're getting ready to sign the contract, you can walk away. There's no penalties, there's nothing, okay? So there's an extensive period of time that as you see the numbers, you see the, the proposals, you get to see the work that's being done. If at any point you get uncomfortable, or you just don't think it makes sense, or if the administration sees that and can make a recommendation, all parties can walk away from it.
Any questions, comments, questions?
So when we talk about project, what are we talking about?
The project that is being discussed right now is the renovation of Christiansburg High School with the addition, as well as a new elementary school.
Okay, so we're talking the elementary school and the high school?
Yes, ma'am. And I think that, um, in our discussions, we're ha- we will be having, as we get into detail, I think that, um, the, the possibility exists to have the discussion about the renovation of, like, say, a Christiansburg Elementary. Elementary, you know, as things shake up. I think that'll also probably get into the mix. Whether that makes it all the way through to the proposal from the company's side, I don't know, but I think that will be in the discussions.
So that would be three projects?
Potentially, yes, ma'am. Two definite, three potentially.
Will those be broken out? Like each one its own proposal, or?
No, well, that's up to the individual submitters. Generally, they'll submit in a group, so they may do the two and then do the three. It will really depend on, because to me, the biggest hurdle here is the financing piece, because that's, you know, as we talked about last night, the play here is the financing piece, because the county doesn't, you know, the funds aren't available to move sooner on a straight bond transaction. So we're really using this from a financing standpoint, which was one of the reasons that the PPA was created.
Sure.
So I think it's going to be from the company's perspective, how their financing structures they put on the table work, and whether they can do two or three. That will drive what we'll say. But I would not be surprised if some do two and if some do three. It will not surprise me.
One of the issues with the elementary project is land?
And we already have, just from before I started, sites have been potentially identified. And as we see, if this project process takes off, we'll get heavily involved in looking at potential sites and working with y'all as a board on that.
There are several potential sites.
Are any of those sites existing sites that we already own?
Not that I'm aware of.
So from that point of view, we won't qualify for any historic credit, tax credits for those?
For all land purchases doesn't qualify for the historic tax.
And there's no building to speak of.
That's correct.
So in the case of the elementary school, using PPEA for the elementary school comes at a net cost to the district and the county, does it not?
Depends on their financing structure. I mean, it's going to be a net outlay because you're acquiring the land, but from an overall cost standpoint versus a public versus a private, will depend on their financing structure. I mean, I've seen.
I'm not sure if I follow, but go ahead.
Okay, so if the public entity went and did the acquisition of land, let's just say for the sake of discussion, it's a million dollars, and we're going to go do a bond issue, and the bond issue's rate is 3.5%, then if a private entity says, I can do the construction of the school, and let's say our construction costs are exactly the same, and their interest rate is 3.4%, then it's a net savings.
Okay.
If their rate comes in at 3.75, you're correct, on the financing, there's a net increase, then it becomes a question of if there's a five-year waiting period before the public entity has the availability of the funds, is that increase in the interest rate justified by having the funds today and doing it today versus waiting a five-year period?
Correct, yeah. I'm trying to understand that piece of it, because when we talked yesterday, you know, and I asked, what's the negative on these? And you said, well, you know, there's a cost associated, these financing companies want to make money on this.
Correct.
So I guess in my assumption, I just assumed that the financing cost is always going to be higher for the private, but that's maybe not the case.
My experience is I've seen, which surprised me honestly.
Yeah.
Coming out of the private sector, I would have thought that a governmental entity with a double A rating would be very difficult to find money cheaper than what they have. But there are entities out there that loan those funds that are able to beat what a double A rated public entity can receive.
Okay. But wouldn't the, as far as the historic tax credits, wouldn't, that seems to me that the Christiansburg High School renovation kind of has, I don't want to say a leg up, but essentially, it's got that element or that potential element which could further help that project, right?
Correct.
So I understand that we want to do both of it. Is there any, I'm trying to understand why we would submit these two together versus separate, so we can understand the financing of each of the projects? Because they're really two different projects.
There really are two separate projects, but we need to be careful because we're not doing a solicited proposal. You know, a solicited proposal would be us as a district, just like a traditional purchasing. We would do an RFP and go out through the bidding process.
Okay.
So it will be up to each individual entity on how they want to structure their transactions. Now, when they submit, so the first unsolicited comes in, you do the advertisement, and let's just say again, there's five that submit. At that point in time, the administration and the board have the right to hold conversations with each of the entities and begin to structure how they want kind of the final deal to look like. You see what I'm saying? Right now, you're not, you as a public entity are not identifying what you want. You've got, you've given parameters, okay? You've given parameters. But once they submit in the conceptual phase, between that phase and the detail phase, you have the ability, and I would, and everybody does, begin to have conversations with each entity about their proposal, you start understanding the details of it, where they're driving their profitability, where they're driving all the aspects of the transaction. And then as an entity, you have the right to, between there and the detail phase, kind of structure, shape the structure of the transaction so that when you get in the detailed proposal, if you wanted to see three separate projects, three individuals separate, that you would have that ability to do so. But it won't occur in the conceptual unless you do a solicited. And this right now is being discussed as an unsolicited.
Keep in mind that Blacksburg Auburn was three projects, but one PPEA, two new, one renovation.
Yeah, I understand that.
And add, and addition.
I guess I'm just wondering why, why wouldn't it be, why can't we do two unsolicited projects? Why do they have to be wrapped up together? Because I think the financing is going to be very different on these two.
Well, I think what he's saying is you put it all out there and you let them decide if they want to propose as three separate, two in one, or three all together?
Okay, I see, okay.
Yeah.
So really, we have to look at what it is that, I mean, at some point, don't we have to look at what we, once the county's borrowing capacity comes, you know, back online, if you will, in roughly 2022? So we have to have a good idea of what we can afford then, right? So.
Correct.
So, so do we have, do we have an idea of what kind of a dollar value on the projects that we can finance? Because, I mean, there's kind of an unending stream of things that we could.
We can map out off of their CAFR report and spread out their cash flow. And the second part, though, that we need to do is take what our projected enrollments appear to be, project it out over the next 10 years, and with that, match up our assets and where our needs are, and basically come up with a facilities plan, for lack of a better term.
Yeah.
And lay out in that plan the priorities of how do we address, and there's a lot of challenges out there. And again, I've been here two weeks, and so I'm not trying to say I know it all, I'm just, I'm just trying to give you what I've seen. So we know that we have facilities that are aging, and so we need to invest dollars in those facilities and bring them back up to the standards today. We know that we have facilities that we're seeing our growth and our enrollment's going to exceed that capacity of that building. And so we need to address those challenges. That particular challenge, for example, as we talked about last night, there's multiple tools in your toolbox. You can fix that problem with a rezoning. But if all the surrounding schools around that particular school has the overcapacity, then rezoning becomes a difficult challenge. Or you can do it with, you know, additions or new construction. And then the third thing that we have are the buildings that, say, the enrollment fits the capacity of the building, but there's security-related issues. And we have buildings that, right now, have challenges in that area. And so then it becomes, they'll have, we'll develop a list, and then it becomes, how do you prioritize that list on, because I would imagine, now until I do the analysis, I'm just guessing, but I'm going to imagine, just having done this in multiple districts, that what our needs are are going to far exceed the dollars that are available from the county's side.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And that's what I would expect as well.
And that's what, the beauty of a PPA is that those private entities are able to, by being in the commercial sector and looking for deals, and let's say, they're all out to make a buck, that's what they do, but find a way to structure the transaction that a public entity may have a difficult time structuring. So that'll be the beauty. The historic tax credit, and let me be clear about that, historic tax credits are just a financing vehicle. At the end of the day, that's all it is. Okay? And it would help if we have a dollar to spend and somebody can do an historic tax credit and they can generate a nickel, so instead of spending a dollar, we could spend a dollar oh five. Example, just using some rough numbers of Christiansburg High, and I'm not trying to say that this is the budget, okay? Just some back-of-the-envelope numbers. If half of the cost are allowable, and if the market's right now at 80 to 85 cents per dollar of tax credit, that'll generate about five and a half to six million dollars, okay, of cash that would come back to the project. So while the county, or in this case, the private entity, they generate that, a year after the building's been issued, the six million dollars of cash comes in from the investor. The investor gets the credit, okay? Now, the school system and the county are able to use that six million dollars and do a further project. Whereas if the county just goes out and borrows the money on a bond and there is no historic tax credit, then once you've done your renovation or construction, there's no more money coming back in to give you funds to do an extra project. So that's where an historic tax credit, it's a financing vehicle, and it gives you the ability to stretch your dollar, is what it does. In a simple term.
Yeah, I understand that, and I understand that we have an option on that with the high school, but we're not going to have an option on that with the elementary school, so that's why I was asking.
On the new, on the existing, you would.
There, yeah.
You would.
Yeah.
And I'm assuming for the Blacksburg Auburn projects, because we weren't taking advantage of the PPEA financing side of things, we did not take advantage of the historic tax credits either that we could have on Auburn Middle School.
Right, I know that for a fact.
Right.
Okay, so I'd like to go back to the issue of the land, just for clarification. Did you say that there were sites that were being looked at?
There's sites that have been previously looked at by staff as potential. No real work, hard analysis has been done. It's just been kind of a, knowing that things were going to happen in the future, let's start just kind of taking a section of the county, and where would we go? Where do we see the needs are? Where do we see the best place to be? And so some sites have been identified, but that's it. Nobody has done anything beyond that very preliminary work. So if you instruct, if you say that we can proceed with this project from a conceptual stage, then we need to begin quietly working on where those sites could, you know, tighten down those sites.
So as a board member, I would like to know where those sites are at?
We would gladly, you know, if Dr. Meyer, you know, we can gladly come up with plans and, you know, meet with y'all and discuss that. Because obviously, you don't want to tip your hand, because when people know that a public entity's interested, obviously, the tendency is the prices go up dramatically, so.
All right, I understand how this works. But I'd like to know, because there may be sites that this board may say, don't look in there.
Correct. And there may be honestly sites or sections of the county you may tell us to go look at that we haven't looked at.
All that's been done at this point is the county has, we've asked the county to identify some possible parcels of land.
Where the growth, where the growth is.
Yeah, and they've handed that over to us, I don't know, about a month ago probably, and we're just, we've sat on it, because for one, we don't have any money to purchase anything at this point. And, you know, at that point, we were not looking at this option.
Right.
We're looking five years down the road. So it's nothing of urgency to know at this point, for me to even share with the school board at this point. And so.
Well, I don't know about that. If there are possible sites that are out there, and the board may say, no, we don't want a school there, then it would be an advantage for us to let you know that now, so that you can just mark them off the list.
We haven't even got to the time to.
Unless it comes to the point, unless it comes to the point where, you know, that might be the only option that we have, one that we say we didn't want, but I think we should know where the county might be looking for land to put our school.
We haven't got to the point to actually share that with you at this point. And so it's, you know, we, I don't even know if it's a complete list at this point.
And I feel like we should, I mean, this may change things.
Absolutely.
But outside of this, I'm not sure, I want to be dictating where a school might go in five years when, I mean, the board changes every time. I mean, that's pretty far out in the future, and I don't know that I would want to tie the hands of a future board either on that.
Well, but if we do this, it won't be fun.
No, that's, and I qualified that. I mean, I qualified that, yeah.
When the county gave us this, this was not an option.
Yeah.
I mean, it was so far in the distance that, you know, things might change.
Right, exactly.
We still don't have a sense of urgency.
Those sites may not be there.
At this point, we're, you know, the main priority is finishing, getting the revenue from the county to finish the Christiansburg High School athletic projects. You know, the last thing we want to do is throw out there, you know, all right, here are a lot of options for land for, you know, five, six, seven years down the road for an elementary school, when we first don't have the, we don't have the financing to do it. And we need to finish paying for this first project, we haven't completely gotten all the money from the county from. So, you know, it was so preliminary, it was a 30-second conversation with Dan and myself, and, you know, basically said, hold off, and we'll come back to it later, so.
It is not unusual for the board to be made aware of potential sites that may be 10 years down the road, but at least we know these are potential sites. And if we as a board say, no, we don't want a school there, then that's something we have the option to do.
Would you like for me to share that list with you at the next? I'd be glad to do that.
Thank you.
We'll do that at the next meeting. We'll bring back what the county has given us, and we can continue to look at other properties as well. But we'll, I'll be glad to show you that sheet that was given to us by the county.
Great, thank you.
But right now, we're talking about whether we want our staff to proceed with pursuing the PPEA.
Correct.
Right?
Yep.
Yeah, my question on that, at one point, we need to know that county buys into this or not. When the timeline starts and you're doing all the research, when we, let's say we said, go ahead, and you're following the timeline you mentioned, and at one point, county says, they don't want to participate in this, you know, at one point, you need to know that they are, they are okay with, you know, this plan.
It's imperative that we work closely with the county and keep them abreast of what we're doing, and let them advise us during that process if they're still comfortable. Craig has indicated that he's comfortable with us continuing to explore and work, but by working together, if there's anything that changes on their side, they would advise us, and we could advise the board, and at that time, you know, put the brakes on things.
Yeah, makes sense. Any other questions?
So on the, you know, the question before us is, you know, do we wish for you to continue exploring this option? And I think certainly, I think there's a lot of interest. I don't want to speak for the board, I can speak for myself. Yeah, I'm interested in this, and I'd like to find out more. There does seem to be, I won't say a chicken and egg problem, but something like that in the sense that, you know, in. but something like that in the sense that, you know, in order to answer, I mean, this is still very high level, what we've heard in the last two nights. And some of the stuff I'd like to kind of, and I think probably the board supervisors is going to want it attached to at least some real numbers or numbers that, um, uh, that demonstrate either the pros or cons of, of, of doing this. But it seems that in order to get those numbers, we would actually have to start going down that road, working with those companies that would be creating these financial vehicles for us. Is, is that a correct assumption?
Exactly, exactly correct.
All right. Okay. And then one other question on that, um, as far as, your slide, I think, said unsolicited proposal. But then it sounded like you were saying that we could get more than one. So we could be working with more than one company.
I imagine based off of conversations just today.
Okay.
That we'll be seeing somewhere between four and seven.
Oh, wow, okay.
Ms. Graham, you had a question? Any other questions?
So with, um, this process versus the, the process that we went through with the Auburn-Blacksburg.
Yes, ma'am.
Will the board be as engaged or do they have to be as engaged with the process? Well, actually both boards, because there was a lot of joint decisions.
It's, it's, there's a heavy engagement. You have to be involved, um, both the school board, because the school board has to make that decision first and then county government make the decision second. Now, you know, as Mark said, it's kind of the chicken and egg because if county government, ultimately the debts, if there's debt, sits on their books. And so they're the only entity that can decide if they can do it or can't do it. So that's why you have to work together. Um, but from an approval standpoint, it has to be, you know, from my side, Dr. Meyer, school board, then county government in that, in that order. So everybody has to be closely working together.
Okay, so when I say closely working together, I mean, we met to talk about HBC. You know, uh, what was going to be in the buildings, what kind of rules we were going to use. You know, so are we talking about that detail of involvement?
Yes, ma'am, you can, between the, um, your conceptual phase and your detail phase. Yes, ma'am, you can get into that kind of detail if that's what you like. Or you may spend your time, um, on, on the process and then do, get into the more detail between detail phase and the contract that we sign. You see what I'm saying? Um, or depending on how the structure is, the, the final, final design may not be until after the contract gets, gets signed. There's a general agreement, um, and you'd be heavily involved at that time. So you're going to be involved, you have to be, from the minute the proposal's received until that school gets open. And it's heavy, and, and I do want to say this, and I know Dr. Meyer understands this because we, him and I have talked about this. It, it's, it requires a lot of work just to get the proposals and to get to the point that we sign a contract. And, you know, that's what we'll be spending a considerable amount of time and energy and effort on, but I think it's well worth it if this moves forward the goals of the, the district where we're able to do things today rather than five years down the line.
Which is, sounds great. And I enjoyed working through the process, even though it was a lot of time and a lot of meetings. But being in the room with the supervisors, making decisions so that everybody was hearing and.
The same thing.
And at the, learning about what was going into these buildings. Where with the other, you know, design and build, we just say, okay, yep, this is what we want and that's it.
And they'd say, here's the money. And we'd say, go for it.
Right. So with, with this process, I felt much more engaged with what was happening in the buildings. And like I said, the conversation with having supervisors, you know, sitting there when we're talking about the decisions and what we're doing.
Yes, ma'am.
Was, I think, was a benefit to everyone.
And I think it has to be a benefit for them because they're looking at construction projects on the county side too. And this is something they, they could learn a lot from, you know, that they could apply to some of the things they're looking at down the road as well.
They could.
It, it still comes back to me, and I, and I don't know, I don't remember what the numbers were. I know I've, I've met with, um, Mr. Meadows and gone over what the county, you know, debt service is and how that, you know, basically ramps up and, and whatnot. But I, I want to say, you know, I'm throwing around, maybe these are imaginary numbers, but maybe they're in the right ballpark. But, you know, maybe it's a, you know, roughly a hundred million dollars worth of debt that the county can, can take on at, you know, at some point.
Right.
In the near-ish future. And so that, this is, kind of goes back to my original question about, you know, splitting these things up. At, at the end of the day, what, what this PPEA process does is it allows us to essentially borrow money sooner. I mean, it's, it's, it's a, it's a financial vehicle.
Correct.
But at some point, we have to pay that money back. And so.
And you're right, the county's capacity for that.
Exactly.
Will be a limiting factor to us.
Exactly.
And may, in the end, eliminate one of those projects.
Well, yeah, or, I mean, that's one way to look at it. Maybe, maybe the other way to look at it is what else can we do? I mean, I, I, yeah, so I, I guess I, I keep coming back to, it, it almost seems like it's pre-decided that, well, we're going to do CHS in this, this Christiansburg Elementary School. And, and I guess maybe my question, I still don't understand where that decision is coming from, you know?
Well, the decision, the decision many years ago was that the Christiansburg project was going to focus on elementary because that's where we were busting at the seams. And now the high school has, you know, become an issue too.
Right.
So if we can do them both at the same time. But I would have real concerns if the elementary project got pushed way back because you have the folks at the primary, the elementary and Bellevue who are feeling kind of dumped on, you know? So to push that back would be a big concern.
Yeah, it, the, the needs are there for both at the same time.
For, for sure.
Not for separate.
I'm not, for sure, those are the top two things that are priority list. I'm not arguing that. I'm just saying that there, there are, there are things, there are further things down the, like, where do we draw the line on, on the first things that?
Borrow.
Exactly, and that's.
So why are we talking about it? So.
Because we're going to, because what, what, um, what Tommy said is that we're going to go forward with both of these at the same time. And it's up to the companies that come back to us whether or not they want to split it up or not.
Right, so why do we?
But if they do, we can reject it.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And one of the reasons. Now we want to do both.
Why do we need it together?
And I think one of the reasons we went down to renovating Christiansburg High School because that actually allowed us to fit an elementary school with that hundred million round number that we can eventually, uh, borrow. Because if you start doing the elementary school, that was going to push the borrowing capacity even further down the road for a high school to be renovated. And building new high school is already a hundred and, a hundred and ten million. So you don't have, if you borrow that first, then elementary school is really down the road.
I, I.
So I think that was the reason that hundred million kind of covers both high school renovation and elementary school.
I mean, assuming that we have a hundred million, is that number accurate? Do we know? Do we know yet?
In preliminary discussions with the county, the belief is that that's a good approximate number right now. Nobody at this point.
Knows, bro.
Until, until we sit down and do the cash flow out.
Sure.
Until you're able to see the financing, exactly the structure it's going to be, it's, it's, it's just, it's a game. Once you say, Tommy, let's, let's, let's move forward, we'll begin developing those models. And you can start seeing the, the cash side of it, which will play an integral part on the final mix.
Yes.
You also will start to see from the company's side, are they able to do two projects at one time? Or they proposing to do one and then somewhere down the line, but before this one's finished, completed, starting the second one. Um, you'll see as we, in the process, we'll tighten down the timing of the historic tax credit and when that falls into the cash flow, which then that also will trigger, um, third and fourth projects potentially that could get into the mix. You'll see us develop the facilities plan that, um, uh, we'll, we'll kind of give everybody a scorecard, so to speak, um, of, of where we all agree the needs are and where we're laser focused on addressing the challenges.
Okay.
And then you as a board have that right, um, you know, to change that shuffle up at any point in time. But it would give the game plan.
I think I better understand it. And I mean, what, what you're basically telling me is that we still have the ability to move those things around. Here was my concern to begin with is that, you know, before this PPEA, uh, came up, we were basically looking at maybe doing these two schools starting in, in twenty twenty-three.
That's correct.
Timeframe. And now we're looking at this PPA and saying, hey, we can, we can move them up to, um, twenty nineteen perhaps, right? And, and, and I was concerned that by doing the two at the same time on the proposals that if the companies didn't come back, i- if they tied them together and, and the financing didn't look attractive to the board of supervisors or whatever, that we're basically torpedoing the, the PP, the, the moving forward, you know, of that schedule for, for both schools. I mean, I would rather build one of those two schools early if we don't have the money to do both of them early. Or like you were saying, I'd rather, you know, start the high school in two thousand nineteen and the elementary school in two thousand twenty if that's the way it has to be or, you know, vice versa, but.
And you clearly, under the PPA, you have that flexibility to, to do it.
All right, fair enough. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Well, and I really like the idea of renovation on what is out, I mean, CES, when I went to have lunch with my granddaughter, her kindergarten classroom is five by five. I mean, we're talking tiny. I'm not, you know, listening to some of the other classrooms, oh, well, they're small. No, they're itty-bitty. When I walked in there, I went, oh, my gosh. I mean, I guess when you're little, you don't pay as much attention, but they're tiny.
It feels like a conference room, doesn't it?
No, it ain't that big.
No, okay.
I've been in bigger meeting rooms. I mean.
But I'm not talking.
A whole kindergarten. So I mean, I'm all about, and no disrespect to any of those schools, but I mean, I just was like, wow, oh, my gosh. So, you know, I'm all about listening to that too because a new school's great. But, you know, and I know there's all kinds of older schools in the other areas too. But, you know.
You got to remember that.
It's Christiansburg's turn.
With the new elementary school in Christiansburg, that half of the kids from CES and CPS would go to that new school. So you would open up a lot of classrooms that are appropriate size that occur in CES and you would eliminate the trailers.
And I get that if we can knock down some walls and make the wa, make the rooms bigger.
What I'm saying is you would not have to use as many of those small rooms. You can use the, the normal-sized rooms, I guess. You would need to use the closets for rooms.
Okay.
Yeah.
I didn't see a lot of normal-sized rooms. I mean, when, you know, they're going in this little room to get their lunch, to take it to the gym to eat. I mean, I'm going, I mean, she's like, no, we got to go over here and we get our lunch and then we come back down this hall and then we, I mean, it's crazy.
And that's what Ms. Krantz talked about.
Right, and, and that's why you would, in any renovation plan, you want to standardize it.
Yeah.
So you would get to your standard-sized classrooms, dining rooms, everything that you have in it.
We can't do, you know, I mean, something.
So the question is, you know, we've, we've always talked about the elementary and the high school, the new elementary, and then the renovation of the high school and the addition. You know, do you want to add on to this just to see how it comes out, the Christiansburg Elementary School as well?
As a third project.
As a third project.
The actual CES, because we're getting confused between the new Christiansburg Elementary School and Christiansburg Elementary School.
Right, right, exactly. You know, do you want to add that third project in there? It, it's, it's, it's one of those things where, you know, you can add it in and then take it out if it isn't, you know, too much.
I think it's smart to, smart to find out.
Because I mean, if you did, the advantage of doing all three of those at the same time is pretty much you take care of Christiansburg, you redistrict everything at the same time. You know, um, if that's a possibility, that would be wonderful. Of course, we don't know that that's a possibility until we actually go through the process.
But I would encourage, I think Dr. Meyer is correct. I would encourage us to look at all three.
Yeah.
Just to see what happens. Because if you can do it all at the same time and fix it, that would be an actually huge victory. Because, you know, and you know as well as we do, you know, we've got other places to get to, you know, even after that. Yeah.
Right, because we've got overcrowding happening in other schools.
Yeah.
Well.
Yeah, so. But I mean, it's one of those things, what, you know, I guess when we originally talked about the new elementary school, you know, forty million dollars and they, uh, and the renovated high school, you know, we knew what our possible, um, um, what we would have to, to be able to spend in twenty-two or twenty-three. And it's no way we could have fit in another elementary renovation. Whereas now, we don't know that. And so I would encourage us to look at putting all three out.
And then we can knock it down.
And who knows what comes back, you know, now. And we might be able to fix all of Christiansburg at once and redistrict the entire, you know, the entire zone and, and get it right.
How would that happen? How, how would, how would we be able to do all three if our, if our headroom's roughly a hundred million and doing this PPA adds essentially financing cost onto it? How do we get to that third one?
It, it, I guess it comes down to what, what does it come back in terms of price?
What does it come back, yeah.
As we figure out our costs, I mean, it doesn't.
Because you got to remember, you know, when the, when the estimates have been given to us are for twenty-three, not for now.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, the numbers were, yeah, at that time.
And so the price, you know, there's possibility that, that all three could come in now at what the twenty-three price would have been for two. And so, you know, I guess I would say is what does it hurt to?
To find out, yeah.
Well, kind of what happened.
And another thing though.
Came in less than what, you know?
And another thing though that you, that you, that's taken place today that wasn't here, say, a year ago, is a Christiansburg High Athletic Project. So that would have, in all likelihood, some of the numbers I've seen included athletics. Now that athletic component comes out.
Yeah.
And that's significant. That's, you know, that's six million dollars.
And we're paying for that cash now, and so that's.
When was Christiansburg Elementary built?
Sixty-three, I believe.
So it would not, um, qualify for any of that story?
Based on the conversations at the state, they, you know, we're, they believe it would. And we'll walk it with them.
At Christiansburg Elementary?
Christiansburg High will, and I'm pretty confident Christiansburg Elementary will.
Seventy-four.
Yeah.
Well, why wouldn't they? And then, I mean, see, and I still even think, can you imagine the old CMS? Because it was built in, what, the thirties?
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So the, the answer to the question, do you wish administration to continue exploring this option? My thumbs is up.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, um, next.
Last.
Can I move forward?
Yes.
Okay. Um, tonight, we're asking for you to approve a supplemental appropriation in the amount of a hundred thousand. These funds will, will be received, um, before and af, before, before and after school programs. And, um, will need to be reimbursed back to the programs. The supplemental appropriations brought to you tonight for approval.
May I have a motion to approve the supplemental appropriation request in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars?
Seven seconds.
Mrs. Graham and Ms. Froggett, any discussions, questions regarding that? That, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We approve the appropriation. Well, next item is our unfinished business. Any matters of unfinished business, board members?
Uh, yes, I have one. So when we're, uh, as we're getting ready to go into our retreat, uh, there's a couple of things I'd like to add to that agenda. And that would be that we come up with, uh, some protocols and some norms as to how we communicate between the superintendent and the board and the board of supervisors. Um, and just how we do business, what our norms are and the protocol. And that those be added to our, um, annual meeting when we.
Sure, June fifth, yeah.
Well, to the retreat, but once we develop those, for those to be added to our January, uh, meeting. What you call it.
Organizational meeting, yeah. Any other unfinished business, board members? Hearing now, the next one is new business. Any matter of new business?
Yes, we were made aware of, uh, funds coming from LAPS and other, um, entities that the superintendent shared with us. So I'd like for that to be put on the next board agenda for us to discuss and determine how the board wants to spend those funds.
Any questions regarding that, the numbers?
Is that something that we've already approved? Is that something that we've already approved?
It wasn't approved, yeah, it wasn't approved items from the past.
No, when was it approved?
It was the last budget cycle.
Yeah.
We.
This is budgeted money.
No.
It's a budgeted money.
No, when there's when there's money that comes into the district, additional funds, which this is, then the board, then the board needs to approve how those funds are going to be allocated.
But this is not additional funds. I mean, like that supplemental appropriation we just approved is a classic example of additional money coming in that wasn't in our budget.
These are.
This is lapse money, this is money already in our budget.
It's actually not lapse money. Lapse money is will be for next, that'll be savings from last year, for next year, basically, is lapse funding. What what you're referring to is savings at the end of the year that that we are making purchases at the end of the school year that are already approved by the school board from the beginning of the school year.
So the items that you listed, we did not approve those those items. The funding may be there from the previous year or whatever, but how those funds are going to be allocated, the board has not discussed that and approved that.
Okay, I believe you you've already approved those in in certain lines.
They're in the category.
Yeah, in categorical lines, which which we then, as administration, can approve.
I would like it to be put on the agenda for the board to discuss how those funds are going to be used.
It's not proper.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
No, it's not.
It absolutely is. When there's funding that's going to be used in the district, then the board determines how that's going to be used.
It's already been done.
Recommend that, well, there are items in that you sent us that you wanted, that wasn't approved. The board did not discuss those items and say, that's how we want them to be used.
We don't discuss.
That was coming courtesy, that was just courtesy that he updated us on that.
Yes, we do. Yes, we do. Oh, my goodness. We're getting to the point where the board didn't make any decisions, we just told, this is what we're going to do.
This is not a board decision.
Is it possible?
It is a board decision.
Is it?
And we can call our attorney or whoever we need to call, but these are board decisions. When there's money that's going to be used in the district, the board is given a recommendation, and then we decide if that's what we want to do or we want to use the money in a different way.
We're using it in the appropriate lines. And so there are the lines that you approved. The board has not approved every single purchase in the school division.
I I don't remember some of those items being line items in the budget.
During the school year, we make decisions on on certain purchases during the school year.
The only one that I remen- truly remember is buses. I don't remember some of those other lines as this board ever discussing or them being a line item in the budget.
We prove categorical appropriations. Under that level, staff determines.
What is what is needed and where is needed.
You may have been talked into believing that, but I know different. And the board needs to be making the decisions. If we agree with what's been recommended, then that's the way it goes. But that should be bought back before the board to be approved or our input as to how those funds are used.
I think in the past, it has been probably not shared with us, but it has been maybe used.
Oh, yeah, this, yes, we have, these things have been shared with us, and we have voted on how we're going to use these funds.
This is different.
This is different.
Well, what what is shared with you normally are end-of-year carryover funds, the at the end of the year. That's what, yes, we were talking about, it's the end of the year, unspent money, and that needs to go to the Board of Supervisors to be approved to come back to us. That is the amount, that is that money.
Yes.
This this. The person I share with you is not end-of-year money that is that is unspent. That needs to come to you, and that is talked about every year.
This is money that is now freed up to be used, which means it was not voted on by the board. So it needs to be bought back before the board for approval or discussion as to how we want the money to be allocated within the school system.
But we already voted on the budget that we got the savings from.
We, no, that's not how this works. It is not how this works.
So is it possible to get the line items, I mean, are are the are the things that staff decides to spend that, what do you call it, savings? I want to get, it's not carryover, it's saving, and it's not lapse, it's savings, right? So are tho- those things then fall under certain line items that we have already approved? Is that correct?
Correct.
Can can we get, I'm asking Dr. Meyer, can can we then get a list of the line items that those things have fallen under? Would that be?
I mean.
Yes.
Helpful.
Yeah, he can provide that, but it's not our place to vote on it, we've already voted on.
Okay.
But it's certainly reasonable to ask for that, but he did kind of give it to us.
When when there's savings, it's the same, it's money that has not been allocated.
We didn't approve the buses you bought last year on your savings.
Right.
Yes, we did.
When we had gas savings.
Not the ones bought on our savings.
Not on the gas savings.
Yes, we did.
Yeah, we approved the ones that were carryover.
It came back to the board, it was discussed at this table, and if it was a consent, that that's what we're going to do, which is what I recall, but it was bought back to this board.
I think, too, we, at the last board meeting, I informed you all that we were moving forward with buying either two or four, four buses.
Right.
And that's basically what I've done with you now. I informed you that we're buying four buses. It is in the right line that was already approved by the school board, so I did not ask for a vote for those four buses. But I gave you that information because it was affecting our current budget and I wanted to make sure you knew that we did not need it in our budget we're currently talking about. It was not something I brought to you to ask for an approval of, just to just to make you aware of it.
Okay, so I'm going to say again, I would like, and it is proper, that that be bought back to the board so that we know what's going on with the funds and not our funds, the citizens' funds, and how they are being spent in a public forum.
Believe an agenda item requires a board consensus.
I mean, if it was the consensus of the board, we'll we'll put it on the agenda.
The item does not require a vote, it can certainly be brought as an item of discussion.
I think we're also, we are getting confused of the types of the money and types of the allocations, too. I mean, there is a lapse spending.
Okay, so let's let's ask the attorney for clarification on those and how those are allocated and approved.
We can, we can do that. We have to do that.
But the information as to how funds are being allocated and spent in this district need to be back in the public so the public knows what we're doing.
And I know last year, Dr. Meyer gave a nice, even to the Board of Supervisors, presentation on exactly how all that money was spent. Savings, lapse, and carryover, ours and theirs.
And it was public, and the board knew it, and we didn't, we didn't object, we would, it was consent, consent
How it was presented.
That the board agreed with what he presented.
Actually, several of those items, I didn't talk about them this year.
Yeah, until after the fact, yeah.
After the fact, yeah. You know, this 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 year, I've I've, you know, given the courtesy to to show you prior.
Sure.
Well, that needs to, again, go into the protocols as to being informed because it really makes me nervous when I hear, I did it as a courtesy to let you know how money in this district was being spent and being allocated.
It was spent in the correct, in the correct line, as was approved.
So we're going to get clarification on all this.
I said, can we just get clarification from Brad on this for the benefit of the board, and and then we'll go from there?
Needs to be on the agenda, then it will be on the agenda. Next item will be announcements and information, anything you would like to announce, any events coming up that you're aware of?
Graduations.
Graduation, that's right, that's right. Nineteen eighteen, nineteen twenty, I think, all in a row, exciting times.
I will say that I'm looking forward to next year when the calendar may be shifted by a week and graduations stop being on my anniversary as well. I'm I'm looking at the calendar that Ms. Schenck sent out, and I I might try to go to some of the other graduations, like New River, and that are happening at at different times.
And I think the Google, Google Doc is shared with us in terms of the the graduation, who would like to attend and who attend which one.
Yeah, can can we add the, I don't think, was the New River one on there?
It doesn't need to be, it's R S D, it's a person there.
It might just be good for the benefit of the board to to know who's going to what.
And the next one is upcoming.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm like Coach Cromer, he's a proud daddy, I'm a proud mama, okay? You know, my daughter just passed her second part of the state board today for cosmetology. And even though, I don't know if she's on that list of being recognized, but even though it's my business, she's coming to work for me. And she could have gone to Meredith's or somewhere else, and they offered her, and, you know, and she was like, no, I'm going to work for my mama. And even though she's going to school, too, so I'm very, very proud of her. And she's, you know, we've, I've heard and we've read emails about the rankings in the class, and, you know, sometimes I think we always hear about what the students aren't doing, but, you know, she's got a four-point oh point, or however you said, four-point oh seven, let me get it right. And she's thirteenth in her class, but nobody, no college has ever asked about ranking or or what it is. But for that high of a grade point average to be thirteenth, we've got some bright, smart youngsters in our schools. And, you know, I I say that not for her horn being tooted, but for all those other kids that work so hard. And, I mean, I just think it's phenomenal that we've got kids that bright in our system. And I think sometimes we forget to acknowledge all the great things that they're doing as well. We only say, you know, they're not ready for this, and they're not ready, and they're immature, and they don't want a lot of work, and they don't have a dress, and they, you know, I mean, but but they're good. And last Saturday night, we had prom, and this just goes on to say that, too. And I always kind of opened the shop, it's got bedrooms and things upstairs, and they, I told them, since we don't have an after-prom at Christiansburg, they could come to the shop. And Abby invited ten or twelve of her friends, and about three o'clock in the morning, I went down or called and made sure that there were no males there still. They had to go. But before, actually, it was a little bit before they left, they were all sitting around in a circle, playing a game, a card game. And, you know, that just told me right there, prom night, all, almost all seniors, about twelve of them, sitting around playing cards, laughing, having fun. We got some good students, we got some real good students, so I just had to toot their horn, but anyway, thank you.
Well, I'll throw this one out, my daughter took her last undergraduate class.
There you go, see? It's relief.
Finished college tuition.
I'm a believer in giving credit.
Any more announcements? And the next one is the upcoming school board meetings, the May fifteen, unfortunately, I won't be here, but Ms. Braggert will be presiding because my daughter is graduating, so I'll be in graduation in Chicago, yeah, that's exciting. And and then we have the June fifth retreat, and then the June nineteen, the meeting. And in between, we have, I think, meeting for superintendent evaluation as well. It's not over there, but it's on our calendar, and we'll get reminded as time gets closer. If nothing else, we are ready to get into the closed session. Our next order of business, may I have a motion to go into closed session to discuss one personnel matter as authorized by section two point two dash three seven one one of Code of Virginia?
Send them second.
Ms. Franklin and Mr. Chabaka. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, we are in closed session.